Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting agenda of the government body of the borough of Bloomingdale, Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. We call this meeting to order by the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor DeMato.
Here.
Councilman Catalano.
Here.
Councilman Graziano.
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson.
Here.
Councilwoman Julen.
Here.
Councilwoman Schubert.
Here.
Councilman Yasi.
Here.
We also have municipal clerk Brianna Smith, Borough Administrator Michael Sondemire, and Borough Attorney Dawn Sullivan. This meeting is called to pursuant of the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on January 12th, 2022. Copies were provided to the local news media and posted continuously in a municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. As per state fire code, I'm required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chambers, the main entrance which you enter through and a secondary exit to the left of where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk orderly to the exits, exit through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. If there's any questions, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing now, we don't have any non-agenda items tonight. And can I motion open up early public comment, please?
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak?
Can I do something?
Excuse me?
Yeah, come on. I turned it on because it was hot as heck in here. You can turn it off tomorrow. In 2020, there was resolution number 2029.23 that dealt with the signs, election signs because of the, I guess, the habit to come, election being, being able to start voting on September 26th. And at that point, they allowed legal sign placement from 10/3 to 25/2. Will they allow that this year? I mean, I don't have a problem if we start from the 29th because that's when in-person voting begins.
I don't have a problem starting the way we've always done it.
Okay, so I'll do it tomorrow.
Which is 30 days before.
So I can do it tomorrow.
That was from, but that was for that year.
No, we didn't have to do a new resolution?
Yeah.
A resolution is only good for one year.
I understand, but what I'm asking is because the governor's executive order for the mail-in ballots was issued at that point, and this is the same situation now, and it's been the same situation for the past couple of years, if that has been followed through. And if not, then I would say in the October 29th is when you can start voting in person.
September 29th.
Sorry, no, I'm sure 29th is when you start voting.
Well, the ballots, the ballots are going out on the 24th, right?
Never said early voting. She said early.
Oh, early voting, I thought the ballots going out.
That's October 29th.
The 29th.
So you're allowed to do it 30 days prior to, so that was September 29th.
So we'd have to do another resolution, right?
If you want to allow it at a different time than normal, yes, you would have to do a resolution.
And that-
Or, freedom of speech, you can't stop. I mean, I'm trying to be, you can't, you can go after it, it's a freedom of speech issue.
It is a freedom of speech issue, but it's also a zoning issue, so it gets, it gets muddy, yes, yes, which I'm sure is why the resolution was done in the past. It would be up to the council if you wanted to do another resolution.
I know, so.
Can you hear the voices in my head again?
We will meet until-
We do not meet until October-
And this is a date before that.
This is a date before that.
Me personally, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, I think we might want to even consider changing the ordinance to get more along the lines of the times, right, where you can-
Well, we can't do that now, so-
I know, I'm thinking long-term and we might build a passive resolution anyway.
Can we-
The ordinance reads certain amount of days before-
Thirty days before, and election day begins this year, actually on October 29th.
Right.
That's when the in-person vote-
So either way, the ordinance is 30 days before whenever voting starts. So the voting starts at 29th, we don't have to really change anything, we just go 30 days before.
And it's October 29th to start putting up signs.
Does anybody have an issue with this?
Not at all.
What? I just want to make sure that the wording is correct, you know, that it doesn't say, you know, 30 days before the general election, I just, I know.
I'm not hesitant to change any ordinance or anything else, I'm just saying this is what I was planning on doing.
I agree with John, though, I think it would be smart that we think in the future, and I just want to be sure that it doesn't say, you know, before the general election or 30 days, I just want to make sure that we're going to cover our bases, that no one will get upset if it actually does happen early.
Because I know in other towns, they're already out. I've seen it all over the place to the, some of the signs.
I like the 30 days.
Well, 30 days before is still, if they start, voting starts on the 29th.
Right.
That's when voting starts, they changed that. It used to be, election day was election day.
Right, it used to be November 7th or whatever that was, was election day.
And write-ins, I mean, that's where some people are like, is it 30 days before write-ins, but they're actually voting on the write-ins.
Well, we'll have Don follow up, but I see no issue with the 29th either, but we just should make sure we follow up and make sure we're doing the right thing.
I'm trying to find the ordinance, but e-codes online is, mobile e-codes is not very-
Because I know last year, a lot of people complained about, some signs are out way early.
There are signs out now in front of Walter T.
There is?
Oh, yeah.
Well, there shouldn't be.
It's been there for a long time.
Is it for voting or for something else?
Maybe, is it leftover?
No, it's on the exit of Walter T, you're looking right at it when you make a right or a left.
Okay.
I don't remember the name, that's how effective it is.
I know, I went right by it three times.
Truth be told, 30 days of looking at signs, in my opinion, is enough.
I agree with that.
Because we do get complaints that they're out too long. So, because you have five days after to get rid of them.
30 days is good, that's how I feel.
Can you just verify that there's nothing in the ordinance that says election day, which is really November 8th? If it doesn't, it says-
The zoning officer knows also because they usually have to go after permits and stuff like that.
We got to get permits, yeah.
And he usually tells you what you can and cannot do, so they'll let you know what you do.
Okay, all right?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? So you know our motion to close?
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reported committees?
Okay, we've got one, economic development, we're meeting Thursday. This is really the, one of the driving forces behind planning for Town Pride Day. So that is also coming up this Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00. As I said before, we have over 60 vendors, it's going to be a very good time, caricaturists, we got petting zoo, we have a DJ, obviously. Also, Bloomingdale, the rec department will be doing races for the first time, so two-legged races, sack races, that kind of a thing. So it'll be interesting to mix it up and try some new things this year. So I hope to see everybody there, it'll be a good time, again, 11:00 to 4:00 this Saturday. And then before that, obviously, is the Bob Koshka 5K as well, right? So that's really the kickoff for Town Pride Day.
Anyone else?
I don't think so.
Mike?
Evie.
Bloomingdale Senior Center, again, they're going to start collecting for donations for their rummage sale Wednesday, September 28th, from 9:00 to 8:00. Their garage sale is going to be at the senior center, Saturday, October 1st, from 9:00 to 3:00, rain or shine. And there's, you know, they want clean donations, in sellable condition, no garbage, and the sale, and so they're going to collect Wednesday, the 28th, the 29th, and the 30th. And also, the library is having their, there's also-
The pocketbook thing?
Yes, the pocketbook bingo, that's happening on, I lost it, in October as well. And I think they're going to be at the, I think they're going to be at the-
They're going to be at Pride Day, too, right?
Town Pride Day as well, I think so.
Yes. Okay. You good? Okay. Mike?
A couple things from the mayor. On the new business, item B and C, we're going to take off, we're going to wait until the Board of Education approves their side of it and gets back to us, and then we'll approve it. We did this last month, premature, and then the Board of Ed made some changes to the language in it, so both attorneys have looked at it again, and we're, I think we're pretty close, but I want them to approve it first and then they'll go back to us. So it'll be on next month's agenda.
Okay, so we're limiting B and C across town, Mark?
Yep.
Okay.
Then we're, I'm being asked by Proquonic, I should say, the ACO is being asked by Proquonic, if we can put together a couple of different quotes for them for animal control services. We currently do mutual aid for them, when they need help, we go down and help them out. They want one that's a full-time, like we do with the other seven towns we do, and then one that's on a part-time basis. So I've been working with the CFO and the ACO, we've got some numbers yet there, so I'm looking to possibly send something over to them just to see what they're, if they're interested, and if it works for them. It's a little sticky because they want to keep their current ACO they have there as well, so it's, it's kind of weird to me, the whole scenario, so, but we'll see where it goes.
More to come.
Yeah, more to come on that.
Okay. Good? Three?
Nothing too important, thank you.
What we talked about?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm bringing, this came up today.
Please.
This is our drinking water in town here, this letter, and the reason I bring it up is I don't want to, I know there's a lot of Facebook posts out there on the clarity of the water, and these are two totally separate issues. The clarity of the water was definitely air in mind. What came out today, we do sampling all the time, and they put a yearly sampling together, and what they sampled for and what we came up a little high on were what they call trihalomethanes, which is a TTHM, in the water system. We have two testing locations, and one of the two locations, over the 12 months, averaged over what they recommend as a standard. The standard is 80 microgram per liter, the one site had 81 microgram per liter.
There it is.
So we have to, by DEP regulation, this letter's going to go out to all residents who are on the water system in Bloomingdale. It's not wells, this is public water we supply. There is no, if you read through the letter, there is no emergency, if it was, obviously, they would have did something right away. There are, what's being done, what we're going to try and do to lower that for the, for next year's sampling, is we're going to try and do increased flushing of the mains, and investigate a sampling, determine the effectiveness of our efforts, and then anticipate resolving the problem within six months is what we're looking to do. This letter is a, came again from the DEP, we modified it for what we have, and we'll be sending this out. But again, I know when this gets out there, they're going to, when I say they, the residents are going to put one and two together and say the clarity of the water, this has to do with that, it does not. The clarity of the water, again, with air bubbles, this is something up and above that, so.
So Mike, why don't we put that on the letter before we sign it out? Just explain that to the residents.
As a cover letter with this letter?
Yeah, yeah.
And this, I'm assuming Butler, who does our billing, well, they had the same issue last year, they sent this letter out. Obviously, we don't have Butler Water right now, we're on the, it's like valley still, but this is our issue now, this is pipes and issues in our, in our town with whatever the, whatever is raising these, these levels up. So we'll get to the bottom of it, and I will do what you said, Councilman, I'll do a cover letter explaining that it's two separate issues, and that there is no medical concern as of right now with this.
All right, it's a couple of questions?
I'll try and answer.
Okay. So we're, we're over the acceptable limit, correct? Does that mean they increased the amount of testing? Because you said for next year's tests, or will they-
It'll be the same, and we'll be monitoring monthly as we're going along here.
So no changes in testing?
No changes in testing. But, on a side note-
Can we request-
We're going to, we're trying to switch over to Butler Water also, and we're very close with that. And to switch over to Butler, we have like 60 or, I mean, 80 sampling sites now. There's houses in town that are built in a certain time period that are now sampling locations for us for lead and copper. So we'll be testing at all those locations as well, so that'll probably even give us a better reading on this as well.
Sorry, then my follow-up would be, as, wherever the water source is for Passaic Valley, as it's coming up a pipe that hits our grid, are they testing the water along that pipe before it reaches Bloomingdale?
Every town has to do these tests, it's not just-
So what's the town before us? Is it Riverdale?
Riverdale or Wanaque, it all comes out of Wanaque's reservoir.
Do we know if their water's okay?
I don't know the answer to that yet, I know when I was talking to the water department, they said there were other towns around here that had this issue. If you read the, I think, oh, no, I'm sorry, they, they attribute the, our water personnel, the worst for us, Bill Doty, he is attributing the, this issue to warmer weather this year with low rainfall amounts, has, he believes, has caused the elevated TTHMs. So he's hoping with more flushing, and we have an automatic flusher right now on the hydrant by Stumble In, it automatically flushes every Monday, I believe it is, so-
Yes, like 2:30 in the morning.
Right, and then Frank, or I should say, the assistant supervisor is now looking to purchase two more of these automatic hydrants, flushers, to put on two other hydrants in town, so we'll see where that goes.
Okay.
Just something to stir.
Just thinking this, just thinking this through, so if the water passes through Wanaque and Riverdale and it's fine, it hits Bloomingdale and there's an elevated risk of-
It could stagnate, it's on our pipes.
Right, so then we switch over to Butler, and water from Butler coming in is clean, but now it's confined to Bloomingdale and it's our pipes.
Could be.
It's not necessarily the pipe itself, it might be an area where the water is sitting still.
Right, unless rainfall, you have fertilizers and chemicals falling into the water, I get all that, I'm just thinking if we can zero in, or will we be able to zero in on where the issue's really coming from? Is this all just being pushed up to us, or are we the problem?
Well, that's, we might talk earlier this afternoon about this, that was, I had the same question.
Yeah.
Is it Passaic Valley sending us this type of water? Or do we, are we not flushing enough? Because we do flush twice a year, the hydrants, but now I think we're being kind of conservative because we're conserving water. So there is water that is sitting in areas. So, we're off by point one?
One.
One?
Now, point one.
One.
Yep. Yeah, if you read that, what does this mean? That the TTHMs are four volatile organic chemicals, all of which form from, when disinfectants react with natural organic matter in the water. So it could be in our system.
Could this be simply as simple as like, an elevated amount of disinfectants are in the water?
Exactly right.
So we're getting elevated-
Exactly right.
Right, where they're trying to over-treat it because they see more of it in the reservoir.
So Mike, question as well. I would think that we're going to get questions from residents, is this something that they can put a filter on? And is this mostly, is this, does this affect, because this does say, you know, if you have an infant, like, is it, is it better for them to use filtered water? Can they get a filter? You know, is this-
That's a question I can ask.
Is this absorbed, like, when somebody's taking a bath? Or is this mostly just the concern with drinking?
According to this, it sounds like it's only with drink.
Drink.
So that's a, yeah, and I think that's a great question, too, because what I was going to say is along the same lines of Ray, I think, one, ensuring that when we send this out, we give them information that is not connected to the cloudiness and the air bubbles, that perhaps maybe dawn as part of like public health and safety, if we can get some basic information to set out about-
They go beyond what's on this, right? Could say, you know, what are, this kind of is very, very broad, right? It says if you're severely compromised and over, in excess over many years, like, what is that?
I think you also have to remember, this is not unusual, all right? Because we know for a fact that Butler had the problem, and then it got resolved, however they resolved it, which we may be talking to them.
With my letter that goes out, I'll have Tom Contasano put something together for me also as our health officer, of what he knows about this.
And I think Tim Zachock would be a great person to help as well. Maybe we can almost do, instead of an actual letter, it just be a quest, like, frequently asked questions kind of thing, to break it down a little more simply, so, you know, along the lines of everybody, yes, as the cover-
So this letter has to go out?
As the cover letter, I'm saying, though-
Okay, so we got 10 days to get it in the mail.
Yes, but I'm saying as a quick cover letter, maybe almost a frequently asked questions. So, you know, your first one would be, you know, whatever everyone's coming up with, but I think between Tim and Tom-
I'll talk to my counterpart in Butler, too, and see what he actually did on this.
Yeah, like, your filter question is the first one that came to my mind, too, like, if I use a Brita filter, is it going to take it out, you know?
Yeah, but I, but that's good questions, I think people are going to simply ask, especially maybe someone that is, you know, immunocompromised, or someone that's pregnant, and they might say, well, would it just be easier that I just get a filter? Or like one of the little Brita things, you know, or whatever.
All right, you just contact Tom.
I'm going to talk to Tom, I'll talk to Jim.
Yeah.
One last question, Mike, and if you don't have the answer, we can, we can talk later. When was the last test and what was that reading? So in other words, we're up by one.
Every year.
So when was the last test?
Would have been last year.
What was that number?
I don't know the answer to that.
Like, my point is, if that number was 60 or 70, I don't understand the scale, but if it was that low, now all of a sudden, we're up-
20 points.
20 points? That's a, that's a big deal.
And it could be that, at that point, it could be what he, what he said. And that would make sense, it's warmer weather this year and low rainfall amounts, could be tricky as it is, so.
Will you find out? Can you just send something out to all of us so we have answers in case we get questions?
Okay, very minimal, just don't respond back to all.
Mike, I just want to understand a little bit more the sampling. So it says here, the average for 12 months. So does that mean that we are sampling every month?
Yes.
Right, so, right, so I think to Drew's point there, right, if we knew one month, it just completely blew the average, right? And then maybe if it went down after that, you know, I think we need more data, it sounds like, on what really is going on here. It also mentions that one of the two sampling locations exceeded it, so the other one didn't.
Exactly.
Right, so that, I don't know how that impacts in terms of the grid and where the sampling gets done, but that's another factor, it looks like, here.
You got to remember with the water system, the way all the updating we've been doing, right, through there, we're, we're creating loops, because the water will constantly flow. If you have one area in town where it is dead end, that is stagnant water. So the whole idea of upgrading our water system is to create these loops so the water constantly flows in one direction completely, it doesn't stop anywhere. So I'd be curious to see where that sample came from, because it couldn't be just as simple as that.
Yeah.
And that water's stagnant.
And then we'll, we test it again next month.
However that system works.
Well, I'm asking, Mike, we test it again next month?
Constantly. It might be more than once a month, but that's 12 months, we might do it three times a week.
Well, that might be something to put in the letter as well.
Yeah.
So they don't think we're only testing it once a year?
Not once a year, not at all, not at all. No, it's multiple times, every, at least three times a week we're out sampling.
Because we have these wonderful devices in front of us, our, our range went from 37.4 to 104 over a bunch of tests in 26. So it's pretty broad.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just do a follow-up, Mike. All right. Great. Okay, just for me, Andrew's place is continuing. I stop up there pretty much every Saturday, I do a drive-through and talk to some people up there from time to time. I spoke to the contractor, they expect to be done and out of there, hopefully by the second or third week of October. His plan is to continue doing base paving as they're going down, so it starts to get cleaner as they work towards the back of Andrew's place. So that's a huge project, it's taken longer because of the issues we had, but it'll be really nice when it's done. And you can see how, at Glenn, you can see what it's kind of going to look like, it'll be really nice. Like John said, the Bob Koshka 5K, actually, registration closes midnight tonight, online, but you can still register Friday at Fireman's Hall or, or Saturday morning between 9:00 and 11:00. It's going really well, we had a lot of nice donations, appreciate that, coming, coming to us. So it'll be a great event kicking off Pride Day, should be nice. Where's the registration again?
What's that?
On Friday night?
Fireman's Hall.
Fireman's Hall, or you can do it that day, or, like I said, tonight, online, or whatever. If you need a registration form, I could obviously get you one. Okay. All right, that's pretty much all I have. Okay. Resolution number 2022-9.12 consent agenda, have a motion for the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, question on the Kennelawn Shared Service? Anything changing? Because we've had this agreement before, right?
Yeah, this is an ongoing agreement we've had with Kennelawn, we use their back truck, and we offset that with, I guess, working on their vehicles.
Yeah, we off, this, as you read this ordinance, it'll tell you that, I think their hourly charge went up $5 an hour, and their vehicle went up $10, which is peanuts in the Grand, because they hold these prices for six years. And the same thing with this contract, this is a six-year contract. And then in return, and I was going to say is, we need to sit down, Share Service Committee, we have this one to do in return for them for the mechanic service, as well as a whole bunch of ACO and other ones that are coming up this year, so we need to meet and get these things resolved. But back to this one, Councilman, is, we have our dollar amount for the mechanical services that we do, $69 an hour, whatever it is, whatever our number is, we get that from them, and then whatever is left over, we actually, it's a barter system, we don't, no money changes hands.
Okay.
So we come up, we say, okay, we did $5,000 worth of business, you owe us $5,000 worth of storm drain cleaning at your rate. And that's how we, we keep track of those hours in.
Oh, so does that mean that the service that we get in terms of the storm drain cleaning fluctuates each year?
Yes.
So it depends on how beat up their cars are in a given year?
And if we need more, then we have to, we have to go the other way, then we owe them, back and forth. So we have to use more, and we owe them, then we know the next year, okay, we got $200 worth of free mechanic service, we owe you type thing.
Okay.
So it's just a barter system, back and forth.
Right, now I got you. I mean, I like it, right? But I was just more curious on the program itself, like, how often do we actually use the truck? You know, how often are we going around the streets with it, that sort of a thing?
Since I've been here, we've always been on the winning side of it, we've always done more work for them, they've always owed us more with their, with their truck to do our storm basin. And we take them out, we just got done doing all our storms two months ago, they went around the entire town. We send one of our guys, they send the back guy and a driver and the truck, and we do the storms throughout town. the storms throughout town.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's a important one, right?
Oh, yeah, it's huge.
They're always getting clogged.
And if you're ever out walking and...
You see one.
You see one, you just...
Send the message.
Them know, and they put on the list, and then they come right out, and they, they clean it. I've done that many a times. Especially down the fall, when the leaves start, right? It's more, more than than... All right?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
That, as far as the mechanics question that we fixed, like, does that have to do with that of their, you guys purchased the, under the, under the car?
The lifts?
The lifts, is that the mechanic service that we're providing?
Yes.
The same?
Yes.
So do they help us pay for that equipment somehow?
The equipment we bought for that is for large trucks.
Large trucks.
We do their police cars.
We do their police fleet, yep.
Are we, do we charge them more? Like, they, they're charging us more, do we go up on our price for helping fix their trucks?
Well, that's why I mentioned before, we, I have a meeting, we, our service is up this year as well, in return, our mechanic service, so I'll sit with the shared service committee and put together what we're gonna go back with. Ours, in the past, it's typically been 2% increases every year. I'm assuming that's what we would stick with, and we take whatever this year's price is, bump it up 2%, and that's next year's rate, and then move forward.
What about fuel, like?
We don't sell the fuel, we don't do it, no. They have their own. Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gassi?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, item number nine, adoption of resolution number 2022-9-17, our municipal obligations, paying the bills, have a motion, please. Someone?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gassi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Okay. Item D, option, adoption of resolution number 2022-9.18, authorizing various roadway improvements, paving through the, for the Morris County Co-op. What we're doing here is just authorizing the money to start working on our co-op paving, which is going to be Struble Lane and Heather Lane, to start with. Heather Lane, we had a huge water main break, and the asphalt rolled, because the water got underneath it, so we need to do that whole street.
With a little bit of concrete work.
With a little bit, yeah, a little bit of concrete work, and there are aprons, so we can get that fixed, because right now it's in pretty bad shape from the, two water main breaks were up there, right?
Two, yep.
Okay, and Struble Lane, we've been talking about for years, and finally, we're, we're doing it. So that's gonna be nice, and Mr. Struble will be happy.
And on Struble Lane, with recommendation by council, we sent a couple of letters out to the people where the drive actually goes on a part of their property currently, and that we're not gonna switch that, it's gonna stay as is, we're just gonna pave like a driveway. So I got, those two letters went out, I got one back, and waiting for the second letter to come back, so we're covered with paving their property.
Okay. John, free leading the year for all this, is it all gonna get done before... Yes. Winter? Yes, I talked to the co-op paver on Saturday. Okay. Thank you for that. All right. I think, once he's done with, with Andrew's, because he does all the co-op paving for Tulka, he's just gonna stay here and... Get it done. And get it done. Yeah. It'll be done this year. Yep.
Given that, given that Heather was based upon the water main break, so you need some skirts and cement work as well, would there be any assessments, any of it?
No, it's not sidewalk. It only says sidewalk. Curbing in, curbing in is all our responsibility. Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gassi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Item E, adoption of resolution number 2022-9-19, authorize and purchase of police evidence software. Have a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Yeah, just a little background, if you would mind.
Yeah, I was gonna add the chief, but I didn't feel necessary for him to come in after I was explaining this, so he wrote me up. I'll just read his, his email he gave me about this software. This software's called The Beast Evidence Software. The Beast Evidence Property Software will allow less hands-on exposure for officers when dealing with property, evidence transfers, and inventories. By utilizing barcode scanners, officers can quickly scan and document a chain of custody without having longer exposure or contact with the evidence. Digital signatures and barcodes increase integrity and traceability for court processes. The Beast is also integrated with the New Jersey State Police Laboratory and the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office, which would streamline processing and submitting for evidence. With this software, officers would minimize the duration of time at state laboratories. They'd have to, they'd sit at the good end, drive down to the laboratories, submit the evidence, and then drive back. That, that's out of the equation now. We currently use an account hardcover book for evidence, in which we log evidence by pen and paper. It's the equivalent of using police equipment from 20 years ago. We recently had an evidence destruction through our prosecutor's office, in which we had to handwrite and organize 400-plus items for destruction. If we had the evidence software, we would've been done in minutes. He's been asking for about three years now, in our Capitol, with us.
Okay. Roll call.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gassi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. Item F, introduction of ordinance number 24-2022, amending chapter 11-9 vacant and abandoned properties. Have a motion to read by title. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending chapter 11, building and housing, section 11-9, vacant and abandoned properties of the code of the Borough of Bloomingdale. And the second and final reading and adoption will be scheduled for October 4th at 7:00 P.M.
Okay, have a motion of up late public comment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?